It's 5:30, we'll call the meeting to order. Hey Jeff, this is your point of view.
My point of view is to flag on United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal in all, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for attending today and welcome to all our online visitors. Uh, approval of December 8th minutes.
We approve.
Motion, we have a second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The floor, same side. Motion carries. Approval of the agenda. Any additions to the agenda?
Oh, we do.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda, that's printed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The floor, same side. Motion approved. Approval of your end bills.
You didn't have an additional list. Stuff that came in. Yep. Stuff that came in and mailed.
There's a couple of mine on the highway department list, one for K O G. And one for two dollars still, they're over $2,000, you want separate? Motion to approve. This is not what we act on, uh...
What have we done in the House, Kevin? Have we had $1,200, we do it separately or not?
Yeah, usually. I didn't have them on my agenda, is why I asked. But I can certainly put them on there.
You didn't have them on, on...
On my agenda, but...
Oh, sure.
I moved it, we approved the bills. Can we, uh... Add Kevin's in there, approve on that motion? Or do it on the second motion?
Let's do those bigger ones on the separate.
Including Kevin's, two bills.
Want to approve the year end bills? Any, uh... Other discussion? And community vote, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The floor, same side.
Just one comment, I got to the last page at the bottom, the lodgey tax. It's a bit significant of all of mine. How about that? Real?
It's, it's greater than I anticipated when we put it together, that's for sure.
How long a period is this, do you remember?
This is monthly, correct?
That's a month?
Yes. Eleven thousand this one, last month was like five. I, I figured when we put it together that it would be in the sixty to seventy thousand a year range maybe, but it's looking like it's probably gonna track more like a hundred to a hundred and twenty over there.
So are they?
Yes, it's on hotel rooms as well as, uh, certain, a small portion of restaurant bills outside of rooms. And then it all goes back towards, uh, tourism to help bring what you do.
Any additional discussion on the bills? All those in favor signify by saying aye. We will.
Leipon?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Fred?
Motion passes. Bring this up to our District 15 delegation. With the upcoming legislative session, I asked our legislators to come in and give us a kind of update on what they see transpiring down at the Senate Capitol this year. Could be a different session maybe. And Senator Elke in attendance, and we have Representative Johnson on video. We'll, uh, let Senator Elke go first. You're welcome.
Good job.
Hi Dennis. Hey Johnson.
Elke.
Thanks for being here. Okay, if I could just mask off.
Well, I can certainly hear you on whether you want me on video or...
Oh, there he is. Did we see you guys? But hey, we're, uh, yeah, the legislative session is gonna be a little bit different. You're experiencing some of those issues here right in front of you right now. Uh, it's, uh, we're going to have a lot less people attending committee hearings and a lot less people roaming around the Capitol. Uh, schools have already been alerted that, you know, they're really not inviting student guests to come in like they have in the past through the facility and sit with their legislator. So, you know, those things are meaningful parts of legislative process that I really enjoy personally because I like, I like especially young people to come in, sit with me in the Senate, and it's, and learn a little bit about what the process is like. And I know, uh, you know, when they miss that, they're, they're missing some, some pretty good civics lessons. And, you know, just like when we do the collective legions here today, we do that every day in the Senate. They do it every day in the House. Those things are important, and it's important for the people who are in quota to be able to see that happening now. The, the other side of that is, it's all gonna be online. So, anybody will be able for, for wherever they happen to be, anyone who's interested will be able to tune in to a Senate session or a House session or even a committee hearing. So all of, like, my appropriations committee that I'm on. That appropriations committee is going to be moved into a bigger role, one that we're not, haven't been using for the last hundred years. But it is going to be bigger, we'll be able to space out a little bit. There will be able to be, you know, if you have an interest, if you wanted to come to the Capitol and make an appearance in front of our committee and talk about an issue, you would be able to do that. But in order to get into the building of course, just like the legislators, just like the employees every day at the Capitol, they have to walk through security, they have to get their temperature taken, they, you know, they have to go through all these hoops to make sure they're healthy and all that sort of thing. And so, there's going to be less people at the Capitol. I know I've talked to the lobbyists who don't plan to attend unless they really, really, really have to. They're going to be attending remotely, just like Representative Johnson is doing today. Now, those people will still be able to make their testimony heard, uh... But I'm, I'm a little concerned because typically we have enough time to hear everyone's testimony in person at a committee hearing. I don't know that that's going to be quite possible if, if tons of people are issued, are interested in a particular issue and they all want to testify. Hearings aren't gonna be long enough for that to happen. So it might be a first on per certain basis, and then the rest of them will simply have to provide a written or audio testimony that we can pick up on our own. So, you know, I'm concerned about the whole process not being as face to face as I like it. I like to be able to look my friends in the eye and be able to talk across the aisle and get people to understand our position and vice versa. And have you guys or anybody who's interested to convey the issues that are concerned, that they're concerned about to us in person is just very, very important. So, it's going to be different. Uh, we are, you know, we're gonna be safe, we're going to be, uh, you know, cognizant of face masks. Face masks or shields, I've got a shield in my office everywhere, and I'll probably be wearing that quite a little during the session. Part of the reason is because you can hear someone a little better because their voice can be out. And it also does restrict breathing quite as much. I did notice a couple legislators hurting the organizational session. That said, by the end of the day, they're getting lightheaded because we're wearing these things all day long. Well, that's because your oxygen level is dropping, you know, so you need to get some fresh air, you need to get that mask off, you need to get some real breaths of air in, and you need to walk around, get a little exercise. All of that is, you're gonna take a little bit of a backseat this session. So it's gonna make it a little bit tougher. Uh, but I, I don't think that the issues are, are going to suffer. You know, things like Kevin's roads, we're gonna hear about those. You know, we're gonna know about that because Kevin and township folks, county folks, city folks, they're gonna make sure that, that we get the message, whether it's going to be back home on the weekend or during, or on our emails that we give lots of every day. So, aye. Will it be different? Yeah, it's gonna be different, but, uh, we'll get to that, but, we'll get to that. But I, I'm not sure if this is going to drag it out longer or, or maybe even make it a little bit shorter. It may be more efficient, who knows? But, uh, we'll find out. The biggest issues we have, of course, are issues that just about every city, county, township, school district, everybody has, could be money. You know, the, uh, all of the dollars that have been flowing into the state from, from oil, you know, some of that revenue is dwindling a little bit, and it will dwindle more. Uh, how soon that will pop back, or how quickly, right, since it will pop back up or not, we'll just have to see how that goes. Fortunately, we have, we have not... Fortunately, we have not died, built into that legacy fund that we established and had everybody, you all voted on in 2010. I remember that legacy fund, when it first started, I happened to be on a conference committee and I carried that bill to the Senate. The, the Dean Congress in the, in the state told us that, you know, by 2015, we could have, we could have $600,000 in this fund. Well, as you well know, the legacy fund is in the seven billion, seven point two, I believe. So the interest coming off that legacy fund is very meaningful to keep that state budget balance. That's one thing that's different about state and our quota compared to almost every other state. We can't leave that building unless we have a balanced budget. You know, we can't budget on what might be gonna happen six months or a year down the road. We have to come up with a balanced budget. So we always plan for a certain amount of carryover so that we can make sure that's gonna happen for the next two years, once we get half, and are looking at the next biennial. Then, and it seems like the people that have worked for us in the legislature and, and do the numbers for us in the legislature, and the legislators, and the appropriations committees, and all the legislators in particular, seem to have a better idea of what's gonna happen in our quota than, than accountants out in New Jersey. You know, we do take their input, we do get numbers from those guys that are the pros and we're looking at a worldwide view. But I can tell you that our projections, since I've been in the legislature from more of a local perspective, have been better than what theirs have been. So it's going to be really interesting to see where we go in this next session with dollars and cents. I don't believe education's going to suffer. You know, I don't, I don't believe roads are going to suffer. They are so critically important in the state of our quota for everything we do. Ag is still our number one revenue source in the state of our quota. So, you know, we can't, we can't go ignoring roads. And, you know, we're Human Services. It's not going to keep ignoring, you know, it's not, they are, it is so important. We met with, Greg and Dennis and I met with the Dallas Lake School District a week and a half ago. The, this whole virtual world that we're living in right now is not really a healthy scenario for young people or old people. It doesn't matter, it's not, and it isn't that it isn't physically healthy, it's not mentally healthy. And one of the things the schools are concerned about is can we get enough social workers in our school system to help us deal with the fallout that's starting to happen and going to be happening because of the mental stress on kids in an environment like this? You know, it's kind of like, it's kind of like being a child in the middle of a war zone. You know, they're always, whether they look like it or not, they're always on it because their parents aren't there, or maybe they, they're not working because they lost their job because of the virus issues, or maybe. You know, there are so many things that are getting to be a part of this, but I'm sure Ron can explain it a lot better than I can. But, but the mental health of our communities is going to be critically important. So, you know, the, the big needs, I, I don't think are going to suffer for me. There will be agencies that are gonna have to tighten their buckles, tighten their gants a little bit. And, uh, and they all know that. And they all, you know, the governor's budget that he's put out is indicative of that, but that doesn't mean it's gonna be exactly like, like it's out there now. That's just one of the options. We deal with every agency. I think there's 51 agencies in the state of our quota that we deal with their legions on. But our Senate Appropriations Committee, we get the first 25 or 26, the first half of the session, and then we get the others, the second half, and vice versa with the House Appropriations Committee. So, we'll, we go through the nipples and dimes and tennies, and we make sure that we're getting, that our people in our quota are in their box. Everybody set enough, Johnson?
Sounds good.
Uh, do we wanna ask Senator Elke some questions, or you wanna let Representative Johnson and Representative Westman have an opportunity to speak?
Maybe, maybe they can answer any questions you guys.
Yeah, well, I, I know it's gonna be an interesting session, uh, some changes. Uh, we had an ILG Association of Congress, we had a Legislative Process Seminar this morning, and talked a little bit about the, the testifying and the committee hearings and, and how, uh, anybody can watch these committee hearings, that, you know, IPD had a tremendous task of implementing the technology through all those virtual meetings down in the Capitol, and they, I think they've done a wonderful job with that. Getting all the committee hearings online and available for people to watch. But you also have an opportunity to testify virtually as well. Uh, you will have to register, they said, for testifying, and you'll have an opportunity to submit your, your testimony, uh, ahead of time. So, like Senator Elke said, if you don't have the time within a committee hearing for, uh, actual testimony, then they can have it virtually, have it electronically. So, a lot of, uh, different changes, but, uh... And do you think, do you think though you'll still see the 800 or 1,000 bills ahead of you? What do you think that will do?
Yeah, I, I'm sure we will. Yeah, absolutely. I, you know, it usually is not the, uh, it's usually not the senators and representatives that have been around for a significant number of years that, that are coming out with a lot of different ideas or whatever. But I've certainly heard some things come down the pipeline, everything from beautiful drivers to more fines for speeding and, and, you know, does it all make sense? It all has to go through the hoops. That's one thing about state or our quota, if you can get a legislator like me or Dennis or Greg to sponsor a piece of legislation for you, it must go through the process. It has to have a hearing in either the House or the Senate to start it. And if it gets through the House or the Senate, then it also goes over to the, either across the hall to the opposite House and has another hearing. And then, you know, it can get killed anywhere along the way, but you're guaranteed to have that initial hearing. So you will see a lot of, especially younger legislators that probably just wanna do something that they've thought of for a long time, or maybe someone to put a bug in their ear. I've certainly got a lot of appeals from, uh, different entities that say, who should do this, who should do that, can we sponsor this, will we sponsor that? And a lot of these, a lot of these issues are not coming from inside the state or its quota, I have to tell you that right now. They're coming from far, far away. There's somebody's idea from Arizona or California or Alabama, but they're trying to, they're trying to get all these issues addressed in every state in the union. So, yeah, I think we're probably gonna have 900 plus bills. And we, we haven't failed to do that since I've been in the legislature yet, so I'm sure we will. I think we had a close to 100 last time.
Yeah. Questions? Yeah. Representative Johnson, the floor is yours.
Okay, so I click on my camera here, do you wanna see me?
Not really. Although I guess, I can look pretty good.
So, anyway, thanks, uh, thanks a lot, uh, you folks for having us in tonight and, and doing this. You know, in ways, uh, this has really made, I think, everybody's life a little easier from communication. You know, we were on some meetings yesterday, and we had one this morning, and, and people from around the state could sit down like this for, oh, I think we're on there this morning for about 45 minutes straight, that we grabbed the opportunity to, to visit like this and talk about the issues they had at hand. And when it's over, you get back to what you're doing, and you're not driving, you know, for two, three hours. So, I, I'm getting used to this, and I sort of like it. One thing, uh, you talked, both Senator Elke and you touched on Jeff about, uh, meetings. Uh, we had a chairman's, uh, briefing the other day from IT down there. And I think the lobbyists are gonna have it the next day or a couple days later. But, but one thing, uh, you know, it's, it's, when you get older, the older you get, the little more apprehensive you get of the technology, but I think we get used to this. It's gonna be a pretty good deal as far as this folks having the opportunity to testify if they can get in, rather than trying to get to Bismarck, it's 20 below and a 30 mile an hour wind in the winter time. So, that opportunity's gonna be there across the state. One thing, and I have to give more detail on this, right in charge, and maybe you had this already presented to you, but I know that, uh, our calendars are put together, so they're all by Thursday of the previous week for what's, uh, becoming attractions for the next week. And so I, I did exact, I got billed at nine o'clock in agriculture on Thursday morning. If you are gonna testify from Devil's Lake, you have to have your testimony written after a deadline on, uh, Wednesday of that week and before eight o'clock that Thursday morning, so staff can go over your testimony. So, uh, when it's being read, when it's live, uh, for the whole world to see, we don't have a surprise. Something in there would be probably not appropriate to be televised like that. So, uh, along with that, we'll have, uh, instead of one clerk this year, the chairman's will have two clerks, one more or less man in the electronics of it, and the other one doing what they usually do as far as keeping, helping the chairman keep the meeting going. So, it's still gonna be the chairman's call as far as how many testify on a, on a bill. Uh, if you're gonna have six for the bill, six against, or however you lay out the groundwork for that bill, depending how contradictory the bill may be as far as some, maybe maybe in attendance. I think most of you have been there, and if that, had a pretty little log room full, and you've been there and there's just probably a couple attendants. So that'll have to be decided how much time we will allow for a hearing. And then, like I said, it's gonna be up to the chairman to make that decision. So that's, uh, you know, we'll get used to it, and I think we can ask more from IT if we get into it. They said they, we're gonna try and stagger, the first week, they're gonna stagger the starting times of the, of the meetings, so IT can get around to the different committee, committee hearings to, uh, help, help everybody get on board with this technology. So that does, uh, my take, well, I'm happy to have as far as conducting the meeting. I, I'm on agriculture, chair, I chair the agriculture again, I'm on education again, so it's what we've done in the past. I've got, uh, a few prefiled bills that come out of interim committee of agriculture, and, and I know there's some, uh, water bills, it'll be, they're still not, ought to be in, uh, console store, working on the draft of those bills, and, and so I, like, we can share it at this time. Still, it's gonna be in those bills. But, uh, as soon as I do have that information, I'll get it back to you, Jeff, for, for where else you want to see it there. And you probably get it before I get to you because you have a network of people, the same people that are involved are the people you work with too, Jeff. So, so, uh, other than that, I guess a few questions, I, uh, I, I'll leave the panel for now.
Thank you. Let Representative Westland go ahead and, and, uh, give some opening remarks if you would.
Okay, thank you very much for inviting me to this meeting. And, uh, I, I sit on Human Services and Transportation. And Human Services, uh, we, we do a lot of work with your local nursing homes, hospitals, Medicaid expansion, this type of thing. And the governor's trying to cut back on some of that stuff, um, especially Medicaid expansion. He wants to bring it back in-house and also cut the rates of that. So we will fight to not do that, and, and last session, we won the fight. And, uh, we will continue to do that in the future. Now, the transportation's pretty light. The biggest thing in transportation is road trains, where we can increase the length of our semis and, for example, a semi carrying or pulling one 50-foot trailer. Uh, we're looking at increasing that to like two 50-foot trailers. So, a farmer taking his product into town will be able to take, uh, 2,000 bushels of wheat into town instead of 1,000 bushels. And with proper bridging and, uh, the, the length of the trucks and this type of thing to wear on the, on the highways will be no more than, well, when I first come up, we had a two-ton truck, uh, that was licensed for 24,000, and we always put 30,000 on it. And they get more damage to roads than these road trains will do. So, uh, that's something that I'm looking forward to working on, and hopefully we can get that passed. And I'll certainly answer any questions.
What other concerns? I don't know which one wants to answer this, but, uh, is social service funding? Is there any fear of that being cut or diminished in any way?
No, I think social service funding, uh, the whole Human Service budget, I believe, despite seeing a slight increase, and I don't believe that we're gonna be looking at any decreases in funding in that area. Certainly, our nursing homes cannot get a reduction in, in their Medicaid expansion, which has been, to me, a godsend for North Dakota. And in my rural community, uh, with our hospital, we used to write off about $600,000 a year cut for people on Medicaid coming into our emergency room and not be able to pay. Well, Medicaid expansion has given us the tool to collect on that, basically by the insurance company. And so our loss in our little, local hospital is minimal anymore. So it's, uh, something that I certainly will work hard for.
What other question? Go ahead, Greg.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Well, I have one question, one other question on the ZONE programs. Is the state happy the way they're going from what you've heard?
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand that.
The ZONE program... The ZONE program, you know, where we've got, what, nineteen zones in the state? Are they all, is the state happy the way that's going with the social service?
I think so. You know, the social service is all being funded by the state now, which in our local areas, you know, and I just think it's really going to turn out quite well. But calling, if I understood the question right?
Yeah, I was just curious, if the state is happy with all nineteen zones, the way they're getting run, the way things are turning out, I mean, they've had two years now to look at it, are they happy? Or is that the feel you're getting from the state down there in Bismarck?
I'm quite sorry, but I cannot understand that question for some reason, I'm not getting a good response here, so.
I've not heard any negative feedback on that end, but how's it working for our area?
I think it's working well. I think our director's here, Rhonda's here, she's nodding her head yes, so.
So if it wasn't working well, I think I would have heard from Rhonda by now, right, Rhonda?
Well, I sit on that front, on her order, and I think, again, I think things are working out quite well. There's going to be some bumps on the road, and I think we need to look at the state doing some additional funding there, especially in Rollet County and Benson County. Counter-county is nothing, but, you know, we need to look at some, some better funding up in Rollet with indirect expenses and this type of thing. So I think that's going to be an issue down there, and I certainly will work to try to improve that.
Okay, thank you. Berry dog money, where's that going?
It's coming.
It's coming?
It's coming, the buckets are being filled, Elke can, Senator Elke could probably answer that better than I can. Are you there, Dave?
Yeah, yeah, I'm right here, thanks. The, as you well know, it, it didn't get delayed as much as it got, just pushed back a little bit, because like Greg mentioned, the whole process was, hey, you have to, this one, have to get its top level first, and then this one, and this one, and after that, then any excess is going to come back to cities, counties, and townships, and that's, that's still a process, although it's probably not going to be called Berry Dog. I think Wardner, Senator Wardner came up with another name for it now, and the dollar's probably not going to be exactly the same either, but like I mentioned, when I first got up there, all we need is another five bucks a barrel for oil, and then things are going to change awful lot, so it's moving, moving target, but it's not, it's not being ignored, let's put it that way.
We can anticipate some money from the Berry Dog funds?
Yeah. Come July twenty twenty-one, correct?
Right.
You know, I should, you know, one thing I should mention about state of our Dakota is it's pretty cool, but I don't think, I don't think we appreciate it like we should, and that's the communication system that we have from state of North Dakota, and Representatives Johnson and Westland being online right now, and being able to have their picture up there and see it live within time, is a reality that every state does not have. Every state is not as up to speed as North Dakota is. North Dakota, they put in that northern tier communication line mainly to help universities and schools, the grade, high schools, grade schools, be able to do these kinds of things a lot, you know, quite some time ago. So we've been ahead of the curve, and we're still ahead of the curve, we're going to be able to do things in North Dakota with that technology that other states either won't be able to do, or it's going to be a while yet before they can handle it. And they're spending a ton of money in other places trying to do what we have the luxury of doing for quite some time. So I, you know, that's not kudos to me or Representative Johnson, well, maybe Johnson, because he's been there since nineteen ninety-two, he probably helped vote on some of this to get it started, but it was already rolling nicely. I remember when I was on the Devil's Lake Public School Foundation Fund, you were president of the board, and, and if you remember, we bought whiteboards for every grade school classroom in Devil's Lake. And at the time, that, that was like, nobody does this, what little town in rural anywhere has this kind of capacity to do that? But it's because of that communication system that was broadband and already set up in the state of North Dakota. So, you know, we're leagues ahead of many other places in the country, so I, it doesn't mean anything to us necessarily, except I think there's a lot of people in North Dakota that have a pretty good vision for what the future can be and will be, and what we should be doing to get there, and I think, I think North Dakota's doing a pretty good job of that.
I would open the floor up for Rhonda to ask some questions.
Absolutely, I was just going to do that. We have, we have some of our bigger departments here that may have some questions for you, gentlemen. Kevin Fieldson, our highways superintendent, transportation is always a big issue in rural North Dakota, but we also have Rhonda Allery, director of our zone, Mountain Lake Social Service Zone, and that's been a big benefit for the county, having the state funding social services. So Rhonda, I'll let you take things away, and if you have any questions or for the legislators, please.
I just have one, Representative Westland mentioned...
I may have to come up to the...
Oh, okay. I just have one.
That's where our microphones are, so.
Okay, I just have one question. Representative Westland, you mentioned the indirect cost issue, I haven't seen any bills, are you aware of anyone bringing up any bills, or what, what any legislation could potentially be?
No, I'm not, Rhonda, and, you know, we've talked about this before, but I think something will come forward this year on the indirect expenses, you know, just, just to try to even things out with the county, you know, because, you know, if I have this correct, we're like two years behind on projecting our funding, is that right, Rhonda?
Well, it's actually...
Well, we spent two years.
It's actually four years now, but yeah.
Yeah, but the, but the state is, is, I shouldn't say backwards, but it's delayed funding, so our budgets are set, we're going to increase costs on indirect funding, we don't have the budget for it, so we're, you know, jockeying things around. And Rhonda, I think, to me, something will probably come up, but I have no idea or no knowledge of any bills that are coming forward yet, so.
Okay, it's, it's pretty complicated, we were able to give some money back to Rollet County out of the indirects, we were pretty frugal with our funding, our indirect funding this year, we tried not even buying any vehicles, so I hope that that helps a little bit. Rollet County, you know, was based on the twenty sixteen countywide cost allocation, some of it the formula payment was, and the other part of it was based on the direct costs. So it really sets up some disparities, because if you spend ten bucks on paper in Rollet County, you got ten bucks back, and you spend twenty in Ramsey County, you get twenty bucks back. So it really sets up some disparities for maybe the workers in Rollet County not to have the same equipment, that type of thing. Our ZONE board was very good at sharing if we needed to, that was brought up really early on, that we would share with some software that was purchased, and I know we voted on that too, so, thank you, that's all that I had, I was just curious about that issue, because I know that Commissioner Alec Albert was very much telling us that there was going to be a bill, but I have not heard anything, so thank you.
Yeah, Rhonda, I haven't heard anything either, but I am expecting something, you know, at the, at the legislature this year that will come up regarding this.
Okay, thank you very much.
You bet, Rhonda, thank you.
Kevin, would you have anything for the legislators?
Sure, first of all, I just want to thank you guys for coming to our meeting, it's always fun to get together and discuss issues, but one thing that statewide, not necessarily just ran through county, but I'm sure you're all aware, in twenty twenty-five, the road and road and restaurants still only have ten bills, I know there's been a lot of discussion about that throughout the state, well, that's not going to help us out. I wonder if there was any legislation we can introduce, change that, or adjust that, or be that different.
Well, I, yeah, I'm not aware of any directives, legislation that would change that, but that definitely is worthy of consideration, so that, Greg, you're on transportation and right?
Right.
Yeah, so I think Greg and I could check on that together, and we'll see what we can do with that. Because you're right, road and bridges especially are a big deal, and I know this might be hard to believe, but, but even at that, North Dakota is ahead of other states, you know, if you were in Minnesota, it's, they're, they're so far behind on, on all their bridges, and, and we are too, but, but the dollar amounts are not even comparable, you know, we're, we're in better shape than many other states are, but we need to get better, because, I mean, you just look at the size of loads and stuff, and, and see these smaller bridges, even the roads I drive, when I typically go back and forth to Bismarck, if I move over six inches, I, I could have my foot off the bridge, and sometimes there's not a marker, so, yeah, we need, we need to put more after that.
You know, the governor is proposing some bonding to take care of some of these problems, but again, it's attacking the legacy fund, and I, I'm, you know, I need to listen to this before I will commit to supporting this bonding issue. I just don't know if rating the legacy fund to do these bonds is the right step, and I know we need to do something with our bridges and roads in our, in our counties, but I need, I need to listen to this before I decide what, what action to take.
You know, the bonding works, bonding works well for cities, because they can do a sales tax or something like that to repay the bond, but in a county's case, it's a little tougher to get enough revenue out of property tax to repay the bond.
Well, that's exactly right, you know, if we had, you know, counter-county needs a lot of bridges done, and if we took out a million-dollar bond, all it's going to do is increase our, our property tax to repay that bond, or at least that's my opinion, and, quite frankly, on the legacy fund, I'd like to see that fund built up in fifteen, twenty billion dollars, and have some real impact on, on property tax abatements, and, you know, instead of, you know, getting rid of these property taxes, it, it kills a lot of people, you know, and it's not a real fair tax as far as I'm concerned.
Greg, while we're on transportation, you talked about the road trains a little bit, in some of the committees that I've sat in on, some of the concerns that they have was, is our, our current road infrastructure capable of handling loads that long for turn lanes and different things like that? Are some of the concerns that were brought up with the road train issues, is that any of, any concern, or is that a legitimate concern, do you think?
Well, once again, we, we've discussed the road train, and Representative Johnson can probably answer more to that, but I, I think there's a real good place for road trains, but, you know, we're not, we're not going to book up three fifty-foot trailers to, you know, to a semi and all three thousand bushels of wheat to the elevator, but I think there's room for the study, you know, because we have to do some, some federal, you know, like I twenty-nine and, and all your interstates that are federally funded, you know, we're going to have to get some federal rules changed on that, so, but I still think it's worth the study, and I think we do need to do a project on that, you know, a pilot project to see if it's going to work. So I'm, I think I'll work hard, and then I can tell you that, so.
They're building to want the interim transportation egg meeting, we sent a resolution ordering that to the federal government, obviously, the federal rules have to be changed to accommodate this type of legislation. It's, they wanted it done as regional instead of North Dakota sitting on the island, here the other states around us, Montana, South Dakota, Minnesota are interested, but we're going to have to do it regionally. So along with that, we did pass a bill allowing the governor to change lengths, weights, and I don't know if that one will go too far, he can do that now in emergency declarations, but, but they were wanting to keep, keep, there's a group that wants to keep this alive, and keep in mind, safety is the number one focus on this thing, we don't want to start going down the road where we have safety issues with lengths and loads, and pilot project, like Representative Westland, Westland said, would designate which roads we'd allow this to happen on, you're going to need points of origin, points of destination, all to handle, hook up like this when they get to a place where they unload or where they do load, so it's all, you have to start somewhere, because we're, we're in the conversation stages right now if we want to go down this road. One thing that'll come up, by the way, when we had this bill in the interim this past summer or October, I guess it was late when we had our last meeting, but we had a lot of, we had a lot of feedback from county commissioners, law enforcement, really concerned about the weights, you know, because they had to figure out, if you have three trailers, triple axles on the front and back of each trailer, how you can get this weight up to, you know, up at three hundred thousand pound range, I think, that, you know, in reality, that probably could happen, but what we're more focused on is, is the bridges, what configuration you could have, and more so probably moving, even moving empty trailers, getting them back to loading destination, or their parcel loads, I mean, like these, these bread trucks are running now, they never do see eighty thousand pounds, so, so it isn't necessarily the weights we're after here, we're, we're trying to figure out how you can move more trailers with obviously less drivers. Statistics show we're, that we're just getting less commercial drivers every year as they retire, and that's not as attractive, you win that line of work, but the hours and the commitment to being gone for home and stuff, so, just things to look at, if that thing's great, and if it doesn't, you know, it's, the folks will decide if they're working on this.
You know, I look at South Dakota, when I go down to Fesel many once in a while, I see, you know, a semi hauling two fifty-foot trailers, and so they're taking ten thousand, or I should say two thousand bushels of corn to the market, and I can envision just on my farm, of hauling two thousand bushels of wheat, you know, it would reduce our costs tremendously of getting our product to market, you know, I, I just, it's, it's not like that we're going to do the road trains over in Australia where they have three fifty-foot trailers hooked together, or even five in the mining countries over there, it's just the fact that we're going to try to get something done where it's more efficient, you know, for farmers and any other, you know, mover to haul these products.
Sounds very good, thank you. One other concern that, that I'd have, would be a big expense would be law enforcement, incarceration costs of Department of Corrections, and the public radio, the siren program, and possibility for funding on that. Commissioner Brown and myself both sit on the law enforcement center board, and that's a huge cost to taxpayers in the county. We have our state's attorney, Carrie Agonis, here who's part of that system, and so to feed along those, Commissioner Brown or Carrie would have anything, any questions regarding Department of Corrections? regarding Department of Corrections or sirens or whatever.
Well, first, I'd like to thank the representative of the state of North Dakota for taking over the funding social service. That was a huge help on property taxes in this county. But we got another elephant in the room is law enforcement. It's getting out of hand. I mean, we need to come up with some idea on how to fund this other than property taxes. Mr. Westland said, you know, they're ongoing and they're getting out of hand. They are. You know, we're gonna have about 1.4 million in costs for the law enforcement center out of Ramsey County alone. We need a little help here somehow. I remember how social service funding was taken care of when we had what you call the so-called Indian County money. I was wondering if there's any chance we could get through a bill of that nature that would help some of these law enforcement centers that are seeing a large influx of prisoners coming in. And I know we want to stay safe. I don't think we have any ideas of deep funding the police in this state. But we need to figure out some way to come up with a formula that takes care of some of this funding for law enforcement centers through sales tax. Because they're the beneficiaries of this. Not only alcohol, but all sales tax, something should be taken care of and kickback to the counties that are seeing these large influence or increases of prisoners. Our capacity out there is 102. And we were banging on that most of the last six months. Federal, they want to bring prisoners to us? Yeah, that's a paying proposition for the law enforcement center. But it still takes a lot of room and a lot of help, people there to take care of that. But I just wondered if we could come up with something that would, you know, help these law enforcement centers that are seeing this large influx of increase in prisoners.
Are all of the are all these centers like this in the same situation yet? Or are we unique in Lake Region?
Well, we're pretty unique here. But I think Bismarck and Dan's seeing a large increase. They're full a lot. Grand Forks is, they're getting some off the border though. They're taking prisoners there where they're bringing them down. And we don't see any prisoners off, you know, that get picked up on the border. Unless we're holding them for another county, yeah.
My understanding is it's pretty common in these also the jails.
Carrie's gonna step forward and she has some comments. So she's gonna get a little closer to the microphone so you can all hear her.
Of all of all your mics, one that you're stepping forward, I can hear real good on that one. And everybody else, it's probably a mask that is sort of hard to hear some of you.
Can you hear me okay?
Pretty okay, now, yes.
Good. Well, thank you for coming and taking the time to listen to us. Just generally, as a state's attorney, what I see is it's common, at least in this half of the state, that we're running into maximum occupancy in all of our jail centers. We're moving people around. So if they're not fitting in some of the lower tiered facilities, they're coming over to Ramsey County. And we are running anywhere between 99 and 106 people, which is slightly over capacity. And we have been for months. That plays into the COVID issue, of course, and the hierarchy, our priority structures in Department of Corrections. But, yeah, there's our caseloads are higher. They have been higher for the last five or six years. And I don't see that ending. But we do what we can to try and not have people in detention if they don't have to be in detention. But sometimes we're probably safely, there's no way around it. But we've had situations in the last three months where law enforcement has made an arrest in a county or tried to make an arrest in a county. And they've called four or five different correctional facilities to try and find a spot to put this person. And that's violent type offenses, not felony ones. But still violent offenses when they're having problems with even facilities to take the fault. Those are my comments, I guess. Thank you.
So who's got this portfolio, Ed?
Yes, and Jeff.
So maybe we should visit before we go to Bismarck, huh?
I think it would help. I think it would help, yeah.
So we're not gonna solve up this evening, so we should probably visit about this before we go down there and see what we can accomplish.
Commissioner Lightwood, anything for the legislators?
Nothing in particular. You guys have touched on pretty much everything we had a question on, so.
Commissioner Bullock? Commissioner Workfield? Commissioner Brown, anything else? Well, again, I want to thank each and every one of you for everything that you do for the citizens of Ramsey County and your district. I know District 15 expands much further than just Ramsey County. But thank you for all, everything that you do. And and your dedication to the people of the state of North Dakota. We should guys come in, wish you guys a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you for what you do. And we're only as good as input we get from you folks that are trying to take care of things at the local level there. So we sure can do without you guys, so we appreciate it.
Yeah, my phone line and email is always open. So if you have any comments or whatever, you can call or email me. Be more than happy to listen.
And I think as part of the discussion was, is that, you know, session certainly gonna be different with walking around the halls of the Capitol and grabbing Senator Relki and Representative Westland and, you know, bending their ear a little bit about something. But we do have your phone numbers, we have your emails. We appreciate the opportunity for communication. And thank you guys again for everything. And, you know, money's gonna be tight down there and things may be difficult to follow back up this way. But we appreciate everything you guys do for us. Thank you.
You know, this might be something, I just saw it sounded food for thought. But this might be something this week, or if we come back and have forms and stuff, maybe this would be something a little easier to, you know, be in education or city or county issues or whatever, is to be able to hook up like this during one of your meetings to visit instead of coming back on Saturday or something, too.
Sounds like a good idea.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think Representative Westland and Senator Relki would be happy to do that.
You know, I really like I really like these souvenirs. I think it's gonna be the new the new marvel.
Thank you once again. We'll move on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Oh, continue on with the agenda, unfinished business. We have a COVID-19 discussion. Oh, Kevin. Skip that over here, sorry, Kevin.
All right. Did anybody hear me from here or anything? Okay, to start off with, we think our battery's slow on one of our trucks. So they broke some windows out of some of the cars in the inbound. And they also cut the lock on the health department's COVID trailer. So at this point, we're just hoping to get some votes into what surveillance cameras and talks. But I haven't got any votes yet. Kind of the holiday season, they're slowing everything down here. But hopefully that's in the next video.
I think it is, Kevin, through the main gate.
Yeah, we just tried to hold this fence. And we patched that hole.
So they they cut it, huh?
Yeah. So, yeah, we did patch the hole in the fence and found that, but.
So you have some votes for security or surveillance? Security cameras?
Yeah, I asked.
And I think it's relatively inexpensive for the liability that it could have to start with an eye on.
And just visiting around the, literally, they're not as expensive as I thought they would be. So certainly interesting to come back.
Has this has this sort of thing ever happened before while you've been here? This is the first time, like, 24 years? Because I've never heard of anybody, you know, cut through a fence and cut through, change, like, I mean, you know, you might not want to leave your vehicle unlocked. I had somebody go and enjoy a ride in mine one night, but that, we got it back. It was okay. I watched I watched the headlights going into the distance, so I was able to call right away. But that's a little unusual.
Yeah, we're all fenced over, the gates are all locked. Yeah, we've got horses or ponies in there in the car. Never anybody stealing anything.
Yeah, but did any of the, well, not many adjacent businesses, but anybody else have any problems? Or was this direct, they were coming straight for your facility?
I don't hear any, but across the street to the south, somebody stole a bunch of tires off one of the cars.
Yeah, I heard about that a couple of weeks ago. There was a couple of, lots of that, tires stolen off. There's been some break-ins happening for a while.
Our cameras are just surveilled a lot, basically. Don't want to get the neighbors. We'll do search and rescue and. Task force that will do that, so. The whole grounds are being surveyed. And we got some invoices from DOT for our share of paving on a project that we have in County 2, Alx Drive. I told them off, it's $49,833.27. Still gonna be one more. We haven't found that project yet, so we don't want to pay that. I'd like to motion, pay that 49,000.
We have a motion and a second to pay the invoices for interim transportation for Alx Drive. Roll call, please.
Grayfield?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Lightwood?
Aye.
Bullock?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
And I guess along with that, the engineering from KLG for County 2, Alx Drive, they had an invoice for $3,937.37. So that was one of the ones that filled it. So we need to motion pay that.
Move it, move.
Second.
Move, approve, move in second to pay the KLG engineering guy on that same project. Was that same project, correct? Roll call, please. Do you want to add Kevin again, was $3,900?
Brown?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Lightwood?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
And also at the last meeting, we had motion for the culverts. So those culverts showed up and they're a lot now. So the total bill for those was $20,896.90. So a motion paid.
And that's from TruMar?
Yes, TruMar's due.
So. Do a motion and a second to pay the invoices for TruMar's steel, the culverts, $20,896.90. And roll call, please.
Bullock?
Aye.
Lightwood?
Aye.
Grayfield?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
So, yeah. Any questions for Kevin? Thank you so much. Now we can move on to unfinished other things. Numbers are coming down, which is great to see. We do have an extension that's needed in our policy to extend the Families First Road Hire Act. This is something that was put in buckets, put in our policy plan. And if this had been extended through the end of March 2021, otherwise it would be the end, the end of this year. I spoke to Crystal about that. And Crystal, you have comments about that? You may cover it correctly?
Sure. So it was mandatory, the regulation shows mandatory until the end of December. But now it's voluntary for an employer until the March 31st is what they're looking for to extend it to. And that's kind of what other counties are looking at also. So just to extend that privilege because of the voluntary from employer, but.
And this has to do with the sick leave and to that nature, correct?
Yeah, so this is only for the childcare portion. So if the child was to have to come, either post-covid or school shutdown, major shutdowns, it's just sort of changing to that piece. We still have a plan where any COVID-related leave for an employee would be waived right now. We'll stick with our seats. I think that's a good piece. We haven't had maybe maybe one that was impeding about abusing it. But of all employees, I think it's gonna work fairly well with use.
Well, three more months gets us out in vaccine territory. We will have we'll have people starting to get, you know, not just first responders and stuff, vaccines will start to come out and get us more towards a flu and start to stop. I'll make a motion to extend.
Three more months of the school, if there's two or four of us.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to extend to the March 31st.
Second. Is that the rule of March 31st, correct?
Yeah.
Is that what I have to pay, right?
Move in second, that we extend the Families First Road Act to March 31st, 2021. Any further discussion? All in papers, supervised by State High?
Aye.
The whole same sign? Motion carries.
So just so I'm clear, now the employee part of the state is saying on the form of a motion.
Yeah, correct. And at some point, this vote left out to discussion, once vaccinations start to occur and staff gets vaccinated, but when we're going to allow that to expire in the back quarters, what we did previously, but what assume that's gonna be a little bit of a wait for now. But I saw that some community members are starting to get vaccinated now, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's a good sign.
I did, and so.
We haven't got an update from Lake Region District Health. At the Canadian Corona Vines Committee meeting this afternoon. And they started yesterday with the Moderna vaccinations. And and they had 100 doses, I believe, and they're expecting more as shipments arrive. And one of the things that Lake Region District Health asked about was utilizing the memorial building for vaccination purposes. And I think we have a plan in place to allow them to utilize that. I think it's gonna work. We're trying to be very flexible on the middle school basketball practices that take place up there. But obviously, public health and latency vaccinations are coming for that. I'm working with District Health and hopefully they can schedule those in the morning, the other day in the afternoon, get practices in there without too much disruption. The school just asked that they have a little bit of heads up. Sometimes that may not always be possible with the arrival of vaccination on short notice kind of thing. And then trying to get that scheduled, but trying to get the kids as comfortable as well. A lot of disruption there. There are some new changes as well. I think things are gonna work. We've talked to Chris and Crystal about the possibility of reopening the building for public access, ensuring that we have adequate personal protective equipment, that our employees are safe and we have protected. Looking at, we don't want to dig and hole ourselves into a date or a number. Um, and looking at, we don't want to dig and hole ourselves into a date or a number, but, uh, as numbers continue to decline and the positivity rates continue to decline, that's, uh, something that we're gonna have to decide as a, as a party when we want to do that. So, you know, I know the city stated last night at their meeting that they're gonna open up their building for public access, um, looking after the nineteenth of January, uh, which would, you know, give us two weeks following the Christmas, New Year's holiday to see how, if there's a surge in numbers, uh, positivity rates after that. And that would be a, a good benchmark for us to look at. But, uh, I don't think at this time we want to just say a date, um, because we don't want to be going back and forth with openings, closings, kind of thing. We want to make sure that, that everything is, is set and we're safe to do so, not only for our employees, but for the public that we serve, so.
Like you said, that our second meeting in January, I believe, is on the nineteenth.
Right.
So that puts us three weeks out from Christmas at that point. So if there's gonna be any increase at that point, we'll have a pretty good clue as to what's going on and we can make a decision at that point. Maybe we can say first of February or something like that, but we can most definitely have that discussion.
We're pretty, probably gonna see the state make a lot of decisions.
And we will, we'll see the state make a lot of those decisions, um, and recommendations for us.
And they'll, they'll be changing colors and things of such nature if we continue to track the, track it, so.
So, hey, you know, everybody, uh, continuing to do the, uh, the safety protocols as, as you feel necessary. And we'll, you know, hopefully see our numbers continue to decline. Any other further discussion on, uh, on COVID? Crystal, did, I can't think of anything to tell you. No, Andy, everything's going dead. And I, I think, uh, the way, the way things have been working, uh, seems to be working. I know, uh, some departments would like to see doors open and public allowed access more for convenience standpoint on their behalf. Um, others would like to see it continue to, uh, remain the way it is by departmental mind. Um, I guess leaving it up to the departments and, and, uh, department heads to do what's best for themselves and their employees and their people that they serve. Um, whether we, you know, allowing people to continue to tell, tell you to tell work, uh, if you would. I guess that's, uh, appropriate to continue doing that, if that's working out for the departments and the department heads. But, uh, I don't know about any other connections, but I haven't had any complaints from public that they're not being served or being underserved. Um, anybody have any of those type of, you know? So I think, uh, we'll continue as we have been, and, uh, hopefully our numbers will go to. Where is it? Carrie, is the court still operating as?
Most of our stuff is still by Zoom.
By Zoom?
With very jobs were suspended just through, I think, eleven, twelve, three January. We don't have any further orders on the company, but kind of our very current person, Mr. Dan.
True.
The Beach County is kind of different, even with the conditions, it's very different.
Carrie, is everything working with social services?
Yes, um, we have, you know, we've had a, um, it, it's been a go, but most people have really adjusted. Um, a little concerned about the traffic. We do have a fair amount of non-compliance of masks, and we have anywhere from twenty-five, thirty people a day that come in. So we'll have to address that as a problem. So we'll probably purchase some PPE to have at our desk to ask them to put it on. But, um, otherwise, no, it's, it, people have adjusted surprisingly well.
As far as I know, the governor hasn't looked to go to indoor mask requirements, uh, that he has put in place since November. So, um, you know, we're still asking people in the public to do that as they, as they come in. So hopefully people are compliant and understand that. Thank you. Uh, anything else? New business? Uh, moving through, uh, beer, beer licenses. We have a list of them to approve. This is the annual thing for all the city limits bars, uh, ties, Buckhorn Saloon, Crow's, Lakeside, Dills Lake Parks and Recs, Grill Bay Golf Course, uh, Shepherd Flag, Root Ranger Convenience Stores, Webster Bar, Military Service Club, Patriot Fuels, uh, Walley's, Northwest Roadhouse, and Thirsty's.
Move to, sir.
Motion and second to approve the beer license. All paperwork's been submitted, I presume, and, uh, everything is good to be approved of. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side? Motion carries. Approval of site authorization. This is for, uh, gaming, for real player, uh, Walley's. Second. Moved and seconded to approve the site authorizations. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side? Motion carries. Uh, point to special, uh, assessment commission. We have a letter of interest from Eric Vaughn, who served in that position prior, and he states it is interesting, and the motion will prove that, so.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve for Mr. Vaughn for the special assessment commission. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side? And then approval of transfer funds. We have a couple here, one for the law enforcement center, and one for emergency management. And this is standard here on transfers to those.
Making sure we all have a big deal.
Yeah.
In the line, the law enforcement center, we had to change to three hundred and eleven thousand, four seventy-eleven. Due to.
Three eleven?
Three eleven, four seven.
Well, it said one point four million. I'm pretty close.
A little higher.
A little higher.
It's a little higher than that?
Yeah.
A little, like, five, three.
One point seven.
I'm doing the math over here. Is that about twenty-two mils? Are those? Sounds a lot. Yeah, I agree with that.
Especially when we can only do ten for them, and there are some on the general.
We had a twelve over the ten, you know?
Point seven, the right of the six, three dollars. Four point seven, no.
Point seven? Really?
That's okay. That's definitely needing, though.
So.
Like you said, that's definitely needing, though.
Yeah, I mean, it's crazy. My God. Come on. We gotta lay all that with property taxes? There's other centers in the state that are strapped to them.
But the very least, a place to start is in, in discussing with them is, you know, if they're going to have a diversion of prisoners from the state facilities down to the counties, they should pay that. I mean, that should be just a given. I mean, if we're gonna house their prisoners for them, they should pay us. Then the other one is looking at, you know.
They did pay us.
Yeah, they, well, yeah, but that was a one-time expenditure because they got money out of the CARES Act.
Right.
They weren't, and they were, they were under no legal remuneration to pay us. I mean, it was good they did.
Yeah.
But they didn't have to. I think going forward, that should be just a, an automatic part.
Yeah, it should be.
If we're gonna house for them, they should pay us. It's no different than any other contract we have with anybody else.
That would help tremendously.
Yeah, it, it, too, it helps something. I mean, it's, it's not a huge dollar figure, but it's still just generally good practice, I think. And then the other thing is sometimes, you know, like a cost-recreving or, you know, per day or whatever. I mean, you gotta look at something, yeah. It's something we've been talking about for quite a while.
I don't, Business Park mad at everybody. They could get, you know. I don't point a finger at anybody, but, you know, it's just fact of life.
I think some of it runs down to it. It's, it's a hub community problem. Because when, when people come into the hub communities, we pick them up here more often, and then we, we end up putting the bill for Ramsey County, even though they're probably not from here. They're from anywhere, you know?
Might not get sent.
Yeah, I mean, it's just larger cities end up picking up more people because that's where people show up to do what they're gonna do, and just how that works. So I, I think that the hub, the hub counties probably need a little bit more help in this situation. So it's something we need to look at.
Were you getting a motion to approve? Do you want these, uh, motions to be literally or, uh?
Move them, bro.
Second.
Move and approve, or move and seconded to approve the transfers? Is that a roll call or just go down? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side? Motion carries. Visitors and delegations, I don't think there's anybody here that has anything else? Anybody on high seat that has anything?
Nope. They couldn't help themselves.
Any additional announcements?
Yes, I said, I said, I'm under thirty-nine for social services. No, I don't have that.
Everyone enjoy the holidays.
Carrie, did you, you and Ron, they have something for us?
Aye.
With that, uh, I wish everybody a very Merry Christmas. Want to thank our employees for all their hard work and dedication to pass here. And, uh, we're extremely grateful, uh, for their continued hard work for the citizens around the county. Very heartfelt thank you, and wish all them a very Merry Christmas. And with that, uh, motion ready, then?
Aye.
We are adjourned.